Okay, I'm told we are now streaming. And this is Monday, April 6th. It's just a little after 6:00 PM. And this is a study session of the Muhammad Seymour Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. I'd like to remind anyone attending in person. There appears not to be anyone, so we'll skip that part. Visitors, we welcome you online. We're going to be in open session for just a few minutes here. Then we're going to go into closed session, and then we'll come back into open session. Visitors, if you would like to make comments to the board tonight, you would email those to Dawn. And her email address was included in the packet when it was sent out. And we will do public comment here at the beginning. And we will also have a public comment section at the end, if you want to email any comments to Dawn. Okay? So recall the order. And roll call, please.
I'll unmute and say, "Yep, here." Yep, I'm here.
Keith.
Present.
Hendricks.
Here.
She's muted.
You're muted, colleagues.
She's here. She's trying to say she's here.
Larson.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
McColl.
I am here. At this point, let's stand for the pledge, which is behind me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Board members, you have seen the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
By Jeremy, and a second by, I think that was Lori.
Yes.
Further discussion on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Public comment. Dawn, do we have anything at this point?
I just have one from Trent Knutsall.
Okay, can you all hear Dawn?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can hear Dawn, yes.
Okay. "Good evening, Muhammad Seymour Board of Education. I'm writing to address an April 2nd article of the Muhammad Daily Blog regarding recent inaccurate and misleading information that could inflict unwarranted harm to the integrity of past and present administration and current members of the Muhammad Seymour Board of Education. In my opinion, the article is an attempt to paint the Muhammad Seymour School District, administration, and board as incompetent and unwise to issue debt for the Fieldhouse project. As the previous chief school business official, I feel it is my duty to combat false and/or misleading narratives surrounding the school district finances during my tenure. Therefore, the intent of my communication is to debunk the inaccuracies and misleading comments largely with regards to the district's financial profile score from the Illinois State Board of Education, otherwise known as ISB. To its credit, the Muhammad Daily Blog did post an article on February 24th about the information I presented on the ISB financial profile score on February 18th. The writer appeared to try and convey the proceedings of the meeting clear or biased. For example, the writer mentioned, albeit briefly and without emphasis, that Champaign County paid property taxes late last fiscal year. As we all know, this was unprecedented and had a significantly damaging impact on our fiscal year 19 ISB financial profile score. Unfortunately, the article was also riddled with inaccuracies. I emailed the Muhammad Daily on March 2nd to politely request that the writer correct this series of inaccuracies, but I never received a response to my email. With respect to the article written on April 2nd, the writer excludes key context and attempts to make connections that are simply unrelated to each other. Take the following claim, for example. The writer states, "After reviewing Knutsall's argument that Muhammad Seymour should receive a higher score than 2.55 because Champaign County delayed property tax payments, ISB stuck with the 2.55 score. This is leading the reader to believe that the Illinois State Board of Education didn't agree with our statement that the late property taxes created a massive shortfall in our finances last fiscal year. My presentation and the comments we submitted to ISB were not an attempt to persuade them to change the score. Muhammad Seymour, along with the other 851 public school districts in Illinois, were offered an opportunity to provide context behind our scores, but never with the expectation that our scores would change." The Illinois State Board of Education states the following on their website. "Your comments regarding your district's finances are an integral part of the profile. While the profile is generated from the district's annual financial report, there are often extenuating circumstances outside of the school administration's control which have a financial impact on the district. It is within the comments portion of the profile that districts are afforded the opportunity to verbally and publicly convey what has transpired in their district, which may have or will impact their total profile score. This will allow for the explanation of significant local financial issues such as cash versus accrual accounting implications and timing of revenue receipts versus expenditures incurred for unique circumstances such as school construction projects. Frequently, people describe Muhammad Seymour as unique, which is true. It's unique in its demographic. It's unique in its exemplary performance in educating its students. While its finances are also unique. However, the Illinois State Board of Education cannot reasonably treat Muhammad Seymour as unique. The financial profile score has to use the same mold for all districts in the state, which is understandable. However, the score doesn't take into account that Muhammad Seymour is one of the fastest growing school districts in the state. How has Muhammad Seymour accommodated the growth? By adding 13 new teaching and support staff positions totaling approximately $850,000 in the last three years. Instead of adding staff and decreasing class sizes, Muhammad Seymour could have stockpiled cash to improve our score, but we did not. Rather, we invested in the educational experience of our students. We also built Middletown Prairie to accommodate steady growth. Yes, we incurred some debt, which impacts the financial score, but we completed this construction without increasing property taxes and instead took advantage of strategic bonding opportunities and the effective use of the 1% school facility sales tax. Instead of building a new school that accommodates the steady growth of our youngest student population, Muhammad Seymour could have continued packing preschool and kindergarten students into the undersized 100-year-old Middletown Early Childhood Building, but we did not. Rather, we invested in the educational experience of our students. The Muhammad Daily article ends by stating that the Muhammad Seymour School Board recently authorized an additional $960,000 in debt for high school projects. It's obvious that the writer of the article first misleads the reader into frowning about the finances and then shames the board for authorizing debt. I invite interested taxpayers to refer to the YouTube video of the board meeting from February 18th, 2020, where the accurate and unbiased version was originally presented. Thank you for your time, Trent Knutsall."
Any other public comment tonight?
That's all I have.
Okay, so we have now, we do have another spot for public comment at the end of the meeting.
Thank you for sharing that, Trent and Dawn.
At this time, a closed session is necessary for, number one, the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students; two, litigation when an action against acting our on or on behalf of a public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal; or when a public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the financial recording is in the minutes of the closed meeting. Is there a motion to go into closed session at this time for those reasons?
Max, could we add personnel to that list?
Yes.
Oh, gosh.
Is there a motion to go into closed session for those reasons?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a motion, I think it was from Merle, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion. Any roll call vote to go into closed session?
Hennessy.
Yes.
Schultz.
You.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Giles.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
McColl.
Yes. All right, so, board members, you need to log off of that link and log onto the closed session link. And on the live stream, public, you need to know that we will be back on the live stream when we're concluded with closed session.
Jared, before we go live.
(noise)
Okay, we are live streaming again and it is 7:35 PM. Monday, April 6th and we are back in open session after our closed session. We've got all the board members back on the Slink and we have Dr. Hall with side information. And we're going to talk about last board meeting. We had some financial related concerns and questions and thoughts related to the COVID shutdown. And I think Dr. Hall and Heather Smith have some information.
Thank you, yeah.
And then we'll discuss.
So I just thought we, Heather and I could hit on some topics here and certainly answer any other questions or concerns that that might be out there. There's some things from last week and also additional information and buried in here, I think is good news too. So we will move ahead and talk about that. Just want to provide a status update on the Field House project. We are down the road a bit in terms of some of the expenditures that our contractors have put out to the tune of $451,000. So, you know, we are into this project. And I'm going to turn that over then to Heather to give an update on some of the conversations you've had about issuing the bonds that are part of this project.
Yes, the whole goal was to be able to approve the sale of the bonds on 4/20. So on 3/9 is when the board came together and approved for your project. On 3/11, Mr. Truxell had a, I just mixed his first name and second name together. Had a S and P call, a due diligence call, just to make sure everything was in order. That was done. The bond for insurance on the issue, we have been given that on 3/12, $700. And Stiefel already submitted the four-year plan out to the banks to bid on 3/16. We're supposed to be receiving the bids back in two days so that we can get everything ready, the sales resolution and everything ready for the 4/20 board meeting to be able to proceed with the project. And also for 4/20, any kind of, any kind of votes on the bonds has to be done in person. It cannot be done through a web act.
So we've got to have four members in the room.
My understanding, and I wrote down, I will check further on this, but we need to have a quorum in the room physically. So if I was to be in terms of, even though the, you know, Open Meetings Act has been suspended to do this kind of thing virtually, there are certain votes, issuing bonds being one of them, that what I'm hearing is to have at least a forum in the room physically.
Could we do that in a special meeting so we can get people in and out of the room very quickly?
Sure.
Yes, as long as everybody's in the room, that's all that matters.
If you're not talking, sorry, do you mind muting yourself?
I hear something in the background, I can't quite figure out what. No, thank you.
Yeah, so they're well on their way. And, and as Lindsay said, the estimates were actually provided by the contractors. Our architect went to them to get actual numbers, so that's how much has been spent so far.
What did we learn from?
Spending has been on, is this on supplies or planning or what, how has the money been spent so far?
On supplies, there's, I mean, it's a lot of things that have been purchased in order to get ready for the project.
Kiefer is flooring.
So what do you think the impact would be if the board were to suspend this project?
If they were to suspend, I mean, it would just cost more and probably storing all of the materials. Not to mention, and I don't mean to jump ahead on, but Lindsay, if you want to talk about that money from the center. We may.
Well, I think the other problem we have is right now the state grant is approved and we're not sure that would be available later on if we delay the project.
Yes.
Is that not my understanding of that?
That is accurate from a conversation I had with Senator Rose, yes.
Okay. So right now, our understanding is the $400,000 in the state grant is still coming.
Yes.
But if we were to delay the project, we risk not getting that money down the road.
Yes.
We've already spent $451,000, so we haven't really delayed the project. We would just be delaying, does that negate $400,000 coming from Jepin?
Yes.
I think what I heard he was saying is he's not sure it would be available in the future.
So we could suspend, we could suspend everything but bid package six though. Is that not correct?
I don't, I'll be honest, I don't know the legalities of doing that, so I would need to check on that.
Have you had a chance to look at the contracts?
Bid package six is the flooring. It doesn't make any sense to put flooring down in the paint later. We risk that some of the flooring, and I know the painter said that would cost us more.
Sure, I understand under normal conditions, but I'm talking about under this emergency bizarro world we're in now where finances are much more uncertain. We could theoretically suspend everything but bid package six and still take advantage of the money from Senator Rose and take advantage of the state grants as well.
I just don't know if there's a, is there a timeframe that you have to spend that money in? Was the money earmarked for the project? A lot of time with state grants, they, they give you a time limit. I know that that $400,000 is so that we will give access to the community, to our field house.
But that bid package six was about $600,000, I think.
But we've already spent $451,000, we just haven't paid for it, correct? So it's not like we haven't spent any money. We have already spent over that $400,000 on this project, correct?
Yes, we have.
Yes.
That's a good point. So you're saying if we suspended everything, we still are not at risk of losing that state funding because we've already spent enough to use that state funding, right?
Question and point, yeah.
I'm not sure. Does the state funding come with the assumption we're completing the project?
I think so, yeah.
I think it does, but I don't.
Usually it's earmarked and you have to designate what you want it for and you have to spend it that way.
Right.
It's been my experience with other not-for-profits.
I don't think we're saying we wouldn't spend it that way.
We got for this.
I'm sorry.
We also got a $50,000 maintenance grant for this. And I'm not sure of the timelines on using that. That could be a longer timeline, so we can check into that.
Other comments on this at this point?
I think that the other problem we have is with supplies. One, do they have a shelf life? Two, are we going to be charged for storing those? The contractors usually aren't keen on keeping supplies around that they're not going to use, especially if they can't be used on another project. These are pretty specific things for the field house. I think it would be a real headache.
Yeah, the architect already did mention the cost of storage.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion. Would you like me to write it in chat?
This is not an action item.
We don't have this as an action item tonight. We can do some advising tonight. And if there's a motion that needs to be made, we would do that April 20th.
Is there any reason we didn't put action on the agenda?
I thought we discussed that we'd already gone under contract. We had approved it in a meeting and in the minutes.
The motion I, the motion I would like to make would not cancel anything. It would simply suspend until our next meeting and then we can give our staff time to figure out what the contract language is and what we can or cannot do. My concern is between now and April 20th, especially that this public conversation has happened, that we may have folks that are doing bid package two are going to spend and order a lot of supplies as they are welcome to do and run up our costs before we get a chance to officially suspend. So I'd like us to consider officially suspending tonight.
Okay, well then we'd have to also, we, even though we opted for something about the bonds too, which would basically put the project back completely because you'd have to resubmit the bids for the bonds, being that they have already been sent to the bank.
Are these bonds callable?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why we did that on purpose so that we could pay them off early if we needed to or wanted to.
So theoretically, we could just do nothing with the bonds and if we get the money and we decide not to do the projects, we could immediately pay them off, right?
No.
That's not free charge either.
The call, the call date is not immediate.
Yes, and.
Isn't there six months or something you can't call them for?
There's a minimum timeframe, maybe a year.
So then, yeah, so then we would be responsible also for the interest on that.
So can we back out of the bonds now?
If we back out of them, I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the costs to our bonds agents and everything would be at this point because of the work that they've already completed. Basically, we would just have to start the whole timeline over again, starting with the due diligence call.
I'm just going to be real honest here. I'm not supportive of knee-jerk in changing all of our plans at this point. Personally, I'm committed to move forward with the project. I don't know how everybody else feels, but that's where I am.
I'm just saying, I think we're too far down the road to, our consequences to yank this and not do it is unimaginable.
And if it's not done this summer, would it be delayed to next summer? I mean, we're impacting a lot of people, the community, the kids, the classes, the extracurriculars, the band, I mean, all the things that go and run through there. That's my question.
So Lori, where do you stand on this?
I'm in favor of proceeding forward with the project. We had a lump last year with it, with the way that the bid procurement went, with the state. We made it, we made it to do this. I trust that we have allocated the sales tax. I like the price, the interest rates for the bonds and I'm committed to doing it. That's my opinion, thanks for asking.
We haven't gotten the interest rates for the bonds yet, right?
No, we haven't, but they are, they're at a very, they're at a low because of the economy rate. I've just been looking at them, sorry.
So here's my question. With this shelter in place and people not able to leave their homes, lots of people, is it still possible for us to do this entire thing within the confines of the summer?
Well, you have the opportunity to start early.
Have we checked with the contractors? Are the contractors? Yes, I mean, I think we need to talk to our contractors and our vendors to understand if they have shelter in place restrictions as well and how does that work in a field house the size of what we have with the work that needs to be done in terms of social distancing and those criteria.
I think the contractors are a lot of work and in fact, they're asking about starting early.
Have we, I'm unfamiliar off the top of my head with what is in each bid package. Have we started any of the work or do these packages include things that are not within the field house?
No, this is, this is field house stuff.
Okay, so we haven't done things like remodeled the office or done the HVAC work or any of those other kinds of things that we've done. This is strictly field house.
100% field house and in a few more slides, I've got a discussion about those other projects.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't know what.
Can't see ahead on my slide, so, no, those are great questions, but this is just field house.
Just to be clear, Jeremy, could you weigh in on how you feel about suspending or not suspending? You're on mute, Jeremy.
Sorry, I hear your argument. I just think that we're too far down the road. Not just too far down the road, I really think we're going to cost ourselves a lot more money by suspending. Because I think we'll even actually probably have to come back and rebid some of this stuff. And right now, I think we're going to get almost everything we can on the cheap at this point. This is probably the cheapest time to do construction.
Okay, well, that's four out of the seven. I had one other question about this. Have we been contacted by the county health or some other authority about preparing to use our facilities for a stand-up emergency medical facility? And are they expecting us to have the field house available?
I have not heard that. I do not know that that's an expectation. We do have other facilities in the district we could offer besides the field house.
Okay, thank you.
Ken?
Yes?
One point that really, that goes along with what Jeremy said is that the bids already went so up so much, you know, from last year and that, that does, that becomes my concern is then it just keeps pushing out other things. So that's, that's kind of where I all come down to. I just wanted you to know that that's kind of where it comes from. Maybe just, if you look at where they were last year and then they came back, there were so much more, which you all saw at the board meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, but I, I would, I mean, it's a moot point right now, I think. But I would expect that the bids, if we rebid, it would come down due to the impending recession, right? But it's moot because.
Apartments are still being built in Mohammed. I mean, some construction is deemed essential and exempt from shelter in place.
Yeah, I don't know that we know enough to forecast what's going to happen to future construction. I know right now, just because of other construction that's underway in the county, that I don't see costs coming down short term. And long term, I think it just depends on how robust the recovery is and how quickly it happens. Yeah, a lot of folks think it's going to happen fairly quickly. I don't know. I don't know. As far as this project, I feel we're to the point where we need to move forward with it. Dr. Holland, what do you think?
Well, just really quickly, so the start date of the project originally was going to be mid-May and we now have the opportunity to pretty much start at any time. So I just need direction on that from the board. We would buy about a month of time because we originally scheduled this to start in mid-May after we used the field house for advanced placement testing. And so that's all happening online. And if we were to come back to school in early May, no one knows right now, but we could maybe do without the use of the field house for those couple weeks if we were to come back to school. So there is the opportunity to start early.
And then we would have use in the fall where originally we thought we might not.
Yeah, potential is done earlier, ready to go. We thought originally it would be done, I think, the end of August, early September.
I think if we're doing the project, that makes sense of the thoughts.
I support an early start.
I don't see any reason to wait.
I would suggest that we not ask any contractor to violate the stay-at-home orders in order to do this work.
I wouldn't ever do that. I mean, I think there's, I see construction going on everywhere. It hasn't stopped. It's going on on campus and apartments here in Mohammed. So we would not expect people to violate any order.
I think, yeah, I think that's up to the contractors and the people who work on it.
The governor also deemed defined what essential is. I would say I would be in favor of starting it now to ensure that it gets done. I think that we can use that as a plus and we can try to have something be positive. Yes, and I just got a text from the architect because I wanted to make sure that the construction could continue. And he said, yes, they can work for the governor's law. Construction is considered critical work. And basically, he said he has two projects under construction now that just moved to no onsite meetings. So when they meet, they don't meet onsite, but their work is still getting done.
They meet virtually. Heather, if they move up, if the contractor, if we tell the contractor he can move up, start date if he wants to, how does that affect the financials? Will it still be okay?
Yes, I mean, we've already got the first payment put into the bond issuance. So that first payment is just the next year's payment that, you know, we'll have to look at, see next year where we're at and see, you know, like we said before, we don't expect it to impact that payment, just maybe other work that we're going to be doing.
And if our sales tax revenue decreases by, say, 50%, where would the money come from to pay the bonds off for the field house?
Well, 50%, the state right now is looking at worst-case scenario of 20%, which is kind of ironic since that's the actual scenario that we gave for the sales tax because that's two and a half months with absolutely no activity whatsoever. So 20%, we would be, we would still even have $100,000 left to do some miscellaneous projects. If we did get into a point where we, where we did not have any money left, which I really don't think is unfortunate. I was at Target yesterday and there still are a lot of people out there because they get things. But if we did, then we have several revenues that we could take advantage of in the short term, such as lines of credit or if we needed to. But I really don't think at this point we would need to.
What lines of credit do we have open to us?
Actually, you would go through your bank and you can get a line of credit up to 85% of your levy. That's another option for us if our levy doesn't come in, you know, in time.
A general obligation loan?
Is what?
Would that be like a general obligation loan?
Yeah, I mean, it would just be like, for example, if you wanted to do improvements on your house, you know, you would go to a bank and get a line of credit based off of your, you know, based off of the things that you own. But, you know, hoping that that would not occur and that, you know, we would still be able to pay it with our sales tax revenue, with the worst-case scenario being 20% out there right now. Of course, we never know the future, but we will, we can figure out how to make it in the short term and then later on, figure out our long-term goals.
I think we would be remiss not to expect a very significant impact, not only to sales tax, but to what we are given and what the state is going to have to budget for us in general. There was a 33% increase in unemployment just last week over the week before. If you read anything that the economists are saying, and Colleen, you of course speak to this better than I because you're the only one here with a PhD in economics. But basically what they are saying is that this will be, just read, well put. This is the economic devastation is going to be worse than you can think. We've got to err in being as cautious as possible, every single cent that we have available. Because I think it is not known right now what the impact is going to be, but I think it's going to be worse and longer than anyone is anticipating at this point. Everyone's focused right now on just getting the healthcare crisis under control and no one really understands where the end of that will be. And I think the economic recovery is going to have to come after the health crisis recovers.
No, I know.
When we hear the healthcare environment, is that the right word? Healthcare side of this is talking 18 to 24 months. I think we have to be very cautious here. I'm very uncomfortable with us not assuming worse-than-worst-case scenario.
Well, here's where I look at it, and I mean, I could be wrong, but, you know, we've already spent a half a million dollars that we're going to have to pay. You know, I mean, that's money that's already spent. Then we could lose another $400,000 if we don't take advantage of that grant at this time. We're three-fourths of the way through the grant. So then we've, you know, spent the money on the supplies and everything and then we've also forgotten the grant.
Well, the $400,000 would pay for what we've purchased thus far to date.
Well, that's saying that there's not a possibility of them wanting us to build it right now too. I mean, I don't know if they're going to give us money knowing that we're not building it at this time. I mean, I guess that's a question, but...
I'm not saying, I am just saying, I think we need to proceed with extreme caution. And I think all of the decisions that we make here tonight are going to have ripple effects that none of us can really foresee. And so for me personally, I think we need to exercise extreme prejudice when we talk about spending any dollars in any shape or form because this will translate in the fall into jobs and to people. And I just need to be cognizant of that for my own.
But the truth of the matter is, nobody really knows what's going to happen, so we're...
But there are models out there that are suggesting what could happen.
I mean, no one knows, but economists are predicting.
I'm just telling you, predicting is the crystal ball. I know that you're not agreeing with me on this, but there's a charger and there's a drainer mode. And I feel that this is the time to rise up and look at some things that are in light of, that can be good, that we have this grant and we've started and it could cost us more in the long run. And I'm not saying that, doesn't make me draw caution to the wind, but...
I guess I'm not responding to that in terms of the field house, but just in terms of our general financial outlook, that we need to be prepared, that things are going to get a lot worse because that is where the models are going. In the same way that we said, let's let the experts tell us about COVID and what we should do, we should let the economists tell us about what's happening and take it into consideration. And I'm not saying that...
It's a regional issue too, though.
I'm sorry?
It is a regional issue too at this time. If you look at the data too.
What's a regional issue?
I don't understand what's a regional issue.
Okay, does anyone else have anything to weigh in on the financial future? Now I would recommend we let Dr. Holland.
I just want to say that I think we need to prepare ourselves for the worst. And I think we need to do everything we can to prioritize providing stable compensation and protection for our employees. That needs to be one of our top priorities.
I agree with you that we need to make sure we're paying our employees through whatever's going to come in, say, the next three years. And there was a recession coming before COVID. And now it's going to be exacerbated. And some people are saying it's going to be more slight and some people are saying it's going to be worse. But I haven't found anyone that hasn't said it's going to be significant that's an economist, right? That's actually looking at these things. And so all I'm saying is that when we go forward, we need to think about the fact that our funding could be cut. What if they came to us and said, have a 10% reduction in your budget? For me, the highest priority is making sure that we are paying our staff, our teachers, our administrators, the bus drivers, the lunch, all of the people that we employ because it is devastating to a family to lose your job because the budget cuts. And I just think we need to be prepared for that and we need to move forward, just with that in our mind.
Does anyone else have anything to add to this before we let Dr. Holland forward? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so just in terms of the proposed staffing for next year, these are positions that were discussed and approved at the March 9th board meeting. And so I'm just bringing back information in terms of what those positions are and the outcomes of not adding them. And so I think it's pretty self-explanatory. These are the positions that, you know, we narrowed, took a lot of months of discussion to narrow these down to be what was needed and the most essential. So last week, the board asked that we not make any additional offers. I want to clarify that though, I assume, but I don't want to be wrong, but that it's okay to replace existing positions. Is that accurate? So putting aside what is currently being viewed, we have other open positions that are open because people have left or retired. So I'm assuming that we can go ahead and fill those because it's not a net increase.
I think we should, I think we should look at any new position that we hire, whether it's a replacement or not.
I agree with that. I think we need to take a step back and take a look at what we can do to ensure that people who currently work in districts still have employment in the district. And I think that that might require some shuffling.
To be clear, before this narrative goes on in longer about people losing their jobs right now, no one is losing their job right now. Okay, so there are certain legal requirements that school districts have to go to to lay off or release people and we're not going through those procedures this spring.
Correct. I'm thinking in the next three years. Because next year's budget is going to be based, the state will receive their income from the 2019 income taxes, which 2019 was not impacted by COVID or a recession. But as people are becoming much more unemployed and there are predictions of that increasing and a pending recession, which we all hope doesn't happen, but it is very likely, then the next year's income for the state is going to be drastically lower. And so I don't think that this year, I think we're going to see a reduction in our budget, but I think it's the year after that we can act, you know, reasonably predict a lower budget. We don't want to hire a bunch of people and then a year from now, find ourselves in a place where we don't have enough money to cover all these salaries. So it seems that maybe if we would shift to sort of make these positions, the essential ones be filled by someone that's currently doing something else right now and then if our fears are not realized, we could open up the hiring and shift back.
But when do we know our fears aren't realized?
I'm sorry?
When do we know our fears aren't realized?
If there isn't a large recession and the budgets aren't cut? I'm sorry, Max, I didn't hear you. Could you repeat what you said?
So you're asking me to not hire special ed teachers and purposely put us over the legal line and purposely break the law?
No, I am not asking you to do that at all. I believe that there is ways that we could take certain individuals and shift their responsibilities so that we would not be in violation of the law.
And drive class counts to the world?
Not with special ed, it's a different certification. It's not a one-size-fits-all for some of these positions.
That's true, but special ed would need the certifications.
Unfortunately, we cannot talk about those things here in open session. Hence my request that we talked about it in closed session to discuss how that might occur is one option, which is not, you know, but I think that there are ways that we could shift things around to meet these legal requirements and be conservative with hiring. It is not because I don't think these positions are valuable. If it were up to me and money was no issue, the junior high would get 10 new teachers next year. And MPE would have multiple behavioral specialists to come in and come beside the staff to help out. There's tons of things I could think about that I would love to have. All of these positions plus 30 more. I'm just trying to be fiscally conservative and to maintain our ability to pay the teachers we have now for the medium, long term, three to five years.
I don't trust the state and I don't trust the county.
All right, you're back. Okay, the live stream is back up. We had some technical glitches and Merle was about to speak when everything stopped working. So go ahead, Merle.
I already said my best stuff.
Now you have to repeat it, oh.
I think we've got to be very conservative. Colleen, you used that word, I'd like it. I don't trust the state. I don't trust the county to get his property taxes on time. This is our primary revenue line for education and, and salaries. And I, I, it just pains me, but I think we've got to be extremely cautious and I think we're just going to have to cease hiring and figure out how to work around it.
I mean, I don't think this is anybody's first choice. Like Colleen said, if we could do it, we'd hire 50 more people. But I think we have to err on making sure that we protect the people that we have and kind of back down the hatches because I think it's going to get real stormy.
I think if we would just put a freeze on hiring now and then we can reevaluate between now and August our different options and see what's happening, see how bad things are getting. And. It seems to me the wisest choice today is just say we're freezing hiring altogether. Any position.
How many open positions do we have?
Everything that we see listed here, plus an existing fourth grade position and I also believe high school math, which is, that's not, those are not new positions.
So these are all existing positions that we're needing to replace?
They're vacated.
Have we replaced? Have we replaced sixth grade ELA yet?
No.
So that one's.
That's, that's another one that is a retirement.
Right. If we would temporarily suspend it, we could discuss this in the future. But we, there's a lot of ways we can move people around. It's not ideal, but.
Colleen, I have to respectfully disagree with that. I'm, I'm, you know, we can certainly talk about that more, but I'm. It's not like we have excess staff.
I don't think we have a ton of excess staff, but I think we have some wiggle room. And it would be best for us to see where we have that wiggle room. And the decisions we're going to make are not ever going to be anyone's first choice. It's not going to be the ideal situation. But like Merle just said, if.
I'm talking about just meeting essential needs. I'm not an ideal. What you see on the screens, my look, I, you know, like ideal, our top priority, keeping in mind that God whittled down. But. We're, we're talking about basic meeting of student needs.
Are we prepared to tell parents we're not going to do foreign language? I'm not prepared to tell that to parents.
But could we keep foreign language exactly how we have it now?
No.
No.
With the mourning, which no one likes, but. I mean, what I'm saying is this merits our discussion, the discussion of the board to discuss these issues. And like Merle said, what, what are we going to do if the state and the county both shored us in the next year or two? Even if it's temporary, we don't have enough days of cash on hand to keep paying everyone if we don't get this funded. And so we just have to be conservative and I'm very sad to say it, it's not what I would choose. But this is only the beginning of April. We could pause this and, and take a look.
Can I ask a question, Colleen? I, I, I'm really. The ones that I'm really the most uncomfortable with saying that on are those special ed legal limit ones. We just.
We 100% need to meet those.
Okay.
And I think that there might be ways that we could meet those. And, and it's not ideal, but I think we could. And if we discuss it as a board and we have these. With who we have and moving people, then maybe that would come out where the board would say.
So basically, do you need to go back even for sessions since she seems to have specific ideas? I.
Okay, well, I'm not sure how we do that without having certified special ed teachers. But if you'd like to go back in closed session and discuss that, we can.
Well, we also have two open PE positions at the junior high. So if you don't hire those, you're going to have PE classes of like seven to kids.
I guess what I'm saying is it, it could.
Last stage.
Today, today we can just say we're, we're freezing for the moment. And then we could come back even on April 20th and have a discussion in May, have a discussion. We hire all the time in August, in July. And so it's not as though if we don't have someone hired by May 7 or April 7.
Not for special ed and foreign language positions, we're not going to. Those people won't be available in August.
I think.
Maybe we should on April 20th then and have a discussion. But today we say no interviewing, no hiring, nothing for the immediate term until we can discuss these things.
And I also think we need to be prepared for August to look very different than it does now. A lot of these models are suggesting that a spike in going back to business as usual in August is just going to lead to another healthcare overload and another spike in the system. So I'm not entirely sure that we shouldn't be really expanding our thought process about what this looks like long term. Because this, unfortunately, while I would love to say by the middle of the summer, this virus is going to have had, you know, the spike in the curve is going to be bent. There are plenty of models that suggest that it's just going to spike again. And so we may be needing to rethink how we deliver school in general. And so having some of these discussions more broadly, I think will put us ahead of the game. We don't have to execute on them, great. I do think that we use, we need to use caution, we need to see the models that are in front of us and no one wants to see it. But I think that there are some very smart people doing a lot of modeling and there are strong suggestions that come the fall, we may have to be looking very creatively at how we address the students.
So in order, in order to, first of all, I just want to say I fully support doing a full freeze. I sent the board a resolution doing that right before the meeting. In order to support those discussions, even starting at the next meeting, could we ask Dr. Hall to go through and provide a list of each of the open positions? And then provide a list of staff members that hold the required certification to, to fill those positions? And then we can see where we do have people and where we don't have people.
Certainly.
It seems like a good place to start.
I, I also should say, I, I'm a little slow on the uptake, so I didn't understand where Colleen was going in the closed session, but now I get it. I suggest we tonight at the end, go back in closed session and let's talk about a specific example that Colleen has. Because now I understand where she was going. Let's talk about a specific example so we understand what we're talking about.
I asked them anything specific when we were in closed session and I was told no. I'm a little confused.
I was confused too, I think that's why I didn't ask it then.
Well, I, I did say that we would talk about specific people and people said we couldn't do it, so it's fine.
No, that's not what was said.
I, I said I had specific people to talk about.
We had the opportunity in closed session.
All right, we'll go back to closed session at the end, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, some good news. Here's money.
We, should we make a motion on that before we move on?
Make a motion on what?
To have a hiring freeze?
We, it's not on here as an action item. We can ask the superintendent to do that.
So I did, I did ask you to put it.
We can't put items on the agenda as action items that the public doesn't know about.
But I, I did ask you guys to put this on the agenda as an action item. And Lindsay told us that anything related to finances could be covered under financials update. Then I asked specifically for it to be listed as an action item.
Can we make sure we're clear about the fact that this is a hiring freeze for all hiring?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so we should probably stop interviewing and posting and everything until we make more decisions.
Yeah, agreed.
Yep.
Okay, so through the CARES money, which is part of the federal stimulus package, districts are estimated to receive right now, this is the estimation, approximately 80% of their Title I allocation. The State Board of Education has to go through a process to apply for these funds. And it's estimated that for us, that would be, at this time, I keep saying, want to emphasize, estimated 274,000. Don't know when we'll see that, don't know if it'll be this fiscal year or next fiscal year. I'm kind of thinking, given the process that's out there, it might get bumped into FY '21. So.
So our understanding right now is approximately $275,000 stimulus money.
Okay. So our state superintendent has recommended that this be used to enhance remote learning. And so that's, that's not a requirement. I, I, you know, there's, this is preliminary information. There doesn't, at this time, seem to be a lot of strings attached or requirements for how the money is used, that was simply a recommendation. So there's, I just wanted to share that, that that's a possibility and as we learn more, we'll go through that process.
Dr. Hall? Dr. Hall, I would like to tell everybody that in an ISB call, Illinois State Board of Education call with our region on Friday, they were very impressed that we had the mobile sites, you know, booths for the wifi for the computers and that's, we seem to be unique in the, using the buses for that. So I was very proud of our district for that.
Yeah, and we had actually, that predated the whole thing that's going on now.
I knew that.
We want to provide wifi on the buses so that our students could have it, for instance, on athletic trips in the evening, driving hours, that kind of thing. So it turned out to have worked out really well and we got that installed. I assume it's working properly, I haven't heard anything otherwise, so really glad to be able to, to do that. So we could possibly look into more of those hotspots or for instance, paying for the Chromebooks with that money. There's a lot of different options and we'll keep those options open and continue to talk about it and see, see how that turns out.
Dr. Hall? Can you just clarify something from the previous slide? Are we getting 80% on top of our normal Title I or 80% instead of the Title I allocation?
No, great question. Thank you for asking so that we can clarify that this is in addition to our Title I allocation, which is approximately 360,000, give or take, a year. So the CARES money is 80% of that.
Does that come with the same, does that come with the same restrictions about how we spend that money? Is it, it is Title I money, so we have to spend it the same way that we do all Title I money, is that correct?
It's not, it is not Title I money.
It's based on that number, but it is not Title I money.
Yeah, so right now, it doesn't seem to have any restrictions. So we're in the beginning stages though and, but you're, you, you are correct in acknowledging that Title I monies has a lot of rules and regulations surrounding it. This just seemed, this is just based on what, the allocation we're getting is based on what we get Title I, but it's completely different money.
Thank you.
So last week, a question was asked about fund balances and so Heather, I'll pump that to you.
And I wanted to add, with the wifi on the buses and also with the distribution, it is a positive thing, they are letting us lose that in our transportation claim. You know, so that we will, we will get money back for the cost and for the money. So for that. But on top of that, I was asked, board meeting, how much our estimated fund balance was going to be at the end of this year? It is estimated to be at $2,449,151 was in the budget. So that's. And yes, I'm sorry, yes, and he had fun. So, and then I reached out to the county clerk's office because I wanted to see where they were in processing our taxes to be received and they said that they are on time with everything. They, you know, they said that last year was just due to the state multiplier, which I have to disagree because other, other parts of the state got them on time. But they said that they are on time, they're actually ahead of things this year, but they told me that it, then it goes to the treasurer's office. So then I called the treasurer who is new in her office. But she told me everything is currently running as planned. Again, this is just people talking, so you don't know what's actually going to happen. But she's going to keep in touch with me on, on that as well. Because I did find out during a webinar I went to that it actually, they just can't decide to send them out later because that's what a lot of people are thinking, that maybe they won't send out the bills till late because of everything going on right now. They can't do that without going through the general assembly. So right now, hopefully, that will be somewhat on time. And yes, I know the collectability will probably be down. But you know, as I talked to the treasurer about, a lot of people's stuff is in escrow. So hopefully we can get some of that as well. But, you know, as I talked to the treasurer about, a lot of people's stuff is in escrow, so hopefully we can get some of that as well. So hopefully, they will come through for us this year, but again, we probably do need to look at a lower collectibility rate, at least in the beginning. And also, they, they, another thing that has to go through the General Assembly is if they were to put off the tax sales of property, that's another way that we get property taxes. But again, that has to go through the regular process as well. So just, we're gonna just have to work about the timeliness and collectibility. As we talked about earlier, I, I went to a free webinar with our attorney. There are a couple options for us. If the county pushes us into that position again, if we had to, we could do both, a line of credit or a tax anticipation warrant. I would have to look at what the best option is at that time. What it'll depend on is what the line of credit, if we get a fixed rate or not. They both are the same in that you can borrow up to 85% of your levy in any fund. But see, if we can get, the reason that I would, the line of credit seems better to me than the tax anticipation warrant, if we can get a fixed rate, it would be that you don't have to borrow 85% of your levy, you can just borrow what you need. So, but it would, it would depend on interest rates as well. So, but, you know, Lindsay called us together just the other day. We are already trying to find areas that we can save in. You know, some savings that we're already seeing due to, this time is overtime, of course. Fuel supplies, food service, because they are only billing us for the food that we actually provide. Athletics, and then we're looking at things in the future, like different services that we get, such as Cintas that comes and actually cleans our roof, topping that. And then looking at different other, somewhere, some places where we have outside contractor work, where we could actually have people inside do it, because they don't have as many things to do right now because of the building closures. So, but we're continuing to look at things. I know that Lindsay and Nicole are looking at, you know, what can be, you know, out of PD, you know, anything that can be stopped or doesn't need to be done. So, you know, she has already charged us with that and finding different things that we can continue to look at savings.
Thank you. Any questions for Heather?
All right, just to talk a little bit about other summer projects. So back in, it was either February or March, I can't remember, which the board did ask Damian Schlitt to take a look at secured entrance possibility at the junior high. And that, that request was made because we found out that we would be getting the $400,000 for the field house, and maybe that would just, there would be some wiggle room with funds. So I, you know, given the situation here, but also just given the layout of the entrance at the junior high and what this plan would entail, I am not recommending that we move forward with that. Given the conversation over the last half hour, I don't know that that's gonna be, I mean, I don't know if there's any questions about that, but for $100,000, it's, it's a marginally okay plan. It puts two of the EOPs in our junior high office into a very tiny little room off, off of the front entrance of the junior high. And it's, it's, I, I just don't recommend doing it, even if we have $100,000, I'd say don't do it. The entrance, not really good trail. This is at an estimated cost of $22,000. This is higher than we originally thought it was going to be after we had contractor come in and, and take a look at it, so there's, there is that.
Is that payable on a tour?
Probably some of it is, yes, but I, Heather's nodding her head, and so...
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, some of it is, yes. Anything that goes towards safety.
What, what caused that to go higher?
The issue was with a lot of the electronics of the, the secured entrance piece.
Okay.
We are recommending that for the office and administrative area project at the high school that we go out to bid, it's, it's reaching a threshold where it's, it's in that range of $25,000. Same with the CTE area at the high school, meaning that's, that's the career tech ed area where we need the air handling ventilation system. So in terms of those two projects, the ones that say go out to bid, we can bring a proposal to the board on April 20th, and then the board can decide either to go out to bid or not go out to bid. If you do go out to bid, then when you get the bids, you obviously vote on whether to take or not take those. So this provides the opportunity for the board to make some decisions about whether to move ahead on those projects or not to, at this point. Another issue that, that I've been working on for a couple of months and is now coming down to a time to make a decision. And I don't want to go into it in detail tonight, because our architect, Damian Schlitt, is gonna be providing a detailed description of the problem to the board and our proposed solution at our meeting on the 20th. And he will also call in to answer these specific questions. We're having issues with the tile in the main commons area of the high school, and we need to remediate that. It can be made for out of, out of health, life, safety. The original tile contractor, the flooring contractor is also contributing some labor and materials and replacement of the glue that is on the tile. It's not functioning the way that it should. So that's another discussion that we can have on, on the 20th, in terms of moving ahead with that. That's more of definitely what I would classify as an urgent problem. It's gotta be fixed. It's been getting, it's been getting worse and worse, especially over the last year or so, in particular, the last six months. So that's just, that's a kind of a 10,000-foot view, if you will, of some of the things that will come forward on April 20th. And can have more discussion about it then, or I can answer questions now.
Could you just, could you just ask him to send us something in writing before the meeting that we could look over before we have the conversation?
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Thanks. And Lindsay, I'm just not sure if the, could we go out to bid, if there is a cost to go out to bid? Would you include that in that information as well, please?
Absolutely.
Is the floor out of warranty? I'm sorry. Is there a warranty on the floor?
Technically, yes. So technically, the floor is out of warranty, but the flooring contractor is willing to honor the warranty.
Okay, thank you.
Other question? Is there any outdoor work required on those jobs, or is it all indoor?
I can't think of anything that's outside.
Good.
Off the top of my head. On these?
Yeah, oh, on those, yes.
Maybe on the, okay, so maybe on the air handling project?
I could say to suit the air handling project will include some work that's rooftop in nature.
Okay.
I would think.
I would wager, I would wager a guess on that, but I think some of it would be outside.
At least in some way, shape, manner, form, we're taking that air outside, so. I would, I would think there's a component that's either on the rooftop or the outside of the building. But that's the only thing I can think of. Okay, so there'll be more about that. Those items communicated prior to the next board meeting. And that'll be on the agenda. Is there anything else while we're still in open session? Okay, so we didn't plan to do another closed session, but we will. And that will involve going back to the other link here in just a minute. I'll do it, yeah. Do we anticipate any business at the conclusion of that? I don't know of any. Do we have any comments during the meeting? Okay.
Max?
Yeah?
I was just gonna ask, Colleen, is there, is this the most efficient way to do this, to go back into closed session? Or can Colleen have a conversation with Lindsay to help, you know?
Yeah, we don't need to go back on...
Refine this a little bit, and then let, we can talk about it again at the 20th.
I think you can, we can talk about it at the 20th.
But I mean, if you had a conversation with Lindsay and, and just refine, you know, give your thoughts and maybe refine it a little bit, so it's a little bit less cumbersome for us to deal with in a meeting. I don't know, I'm just all about doing it more efficiently.
Sure, because I don't have all the solutions. I'm just trying to think of ways we can be more efficient. So, yeah, that's great.
Good suggestion.
Thanks.
Okay, so is everybody good with Colleen having that discussion with Lindsay and not going back into closed session?
Yes.
I'll take silence as a yes. Is there any further business to come before the board while we're in open session?
No.
Wait, actually, can I just say one thing before we go? I just wanna say thank you so much to the teachers. And as a person who was thrown into online education for one of my classes just three weeks ago, so just a few weeks ahead of them, I actually do a lot of online education. I spent five years really studying all of the pedagogy and all the things about online education. And I, I teach one class completely online, and it works great. And then they told me three weeks ago to throw this into another class. And it is, even for someone who's experienced it, really difficult. And so I just wanna say thank you to the teachers. I know how hard it is, what they're being asked to do. And I sort of wanna throw out just a little bit of encouragement that you're so excited, and when it starts, and you have all these grand plans, and that you're not a failure if they don't all work, right? That some kids will do this, and some kids won't, and I, I just wanna give a word of encouragement that it's a lot harder than it seems. And someone told me when I started, take everything that you have in your grand inspiration to do and cut it in half. And that still might not all work out. So I just wanna say an extra thank you and just that word of encouragement. Thanks.
Okay.
Agreed.
Any other business to come before the board or not? Hearing now, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We got a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second, Larson?
Discussion on adjournment? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carried, but the record reflected is...
Eight forty?
Eight forty, or I'm, eight forty-eight, eight forty-eight, and read the clock from this angle. Eight forty-eight in the yard, Chris. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, good night.
Everybody be well.
Good night.